So this is the regular city council meeting for April 20th for Minutrista. I'm going to call the meeting to order. And our first order of business will be to say the pledge of allegiance. This time Pam Mortenson has offered to say it for us. So we have one person to say it versus trying to do it all in unison, which did not work last time. So Pam, go ahead.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So with that, we'll do a sound check and also it will be our roll call. So I'll start out with city administrator Mike Barone.
I am here.
Finance director Brian Grimm.
I'm here also.
All right. Community development director David Abel.
I am here.
And our attorney with Kennedy and Graven Ron Beatty.
Present.
All right. And our chief of police Paul Falls.
I am here.
All right. And then we'll move on to council members. Pam Mortenson, I am here. Mike Maliter.
I'm here.
John Chumperland.
I'm here.
Shannon Bruce.
I'm here.
Our city engineer with WSB Allison Fousky.
I'm here.
Our city clerk Chris Lindquist.
I am here.
Director of administration Ally Paulfo.
I am here.
Our public works superintendent Gary Peters.
I am here.
And I'm Lisa Whelan, the mayor. So with that, we move on to approval of our agenda. The only thing I would like, yes?
If I may, I believe Adam Gadwa is also on the call as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, Adam. Okay.
That's okay. Yeah, I'm here as well.
All right. Thank you. So next is approval of the agenda. The only thing I'd like to add is we have under business items, 6B, our 2021 street improvement project discussion. I'd like to add that we also have a discussion regarding our 2020 maintenance projects, or I should say potential maintenance projects. If we can add that. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Are there any other additions or changes?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
That would be 6C then?
Yeah, it'll be with B. So I don't know if you want to add a C. That's fine.
Okay. Well, because street improvements and maintenance, aren't they, those, well, those are two things to say so.
Yeah. Just put it down as 6C for 2020 street maintenance projects, I think is what it would be called.
Okay, 2021, street maintenance, right?
No, no, nope, 2020.
Okay, okay.
2020, yep. I know it's confusing, but when we get there, you'll see. All right. Any other changes? Hearing none, then is there a motion to approve the agenda with that one change? This is Pam and I'll make that motion. All right. Is there, Pam made that motion. Is there a second?
John T., I will second.
All right. And John seconded that. And all those in favor signify when I ask, call your name, signify with aye or nay. Pam?
Aye.
Mike Maliter?
Aye.
John Chumperland?
Aye.
Shannon Bruce?
Just a point of order. When we add an agenda item, is it customary that we don't vote on added agenda items? Or is this going to be something we're voting on?
We're voting to add it to the, we're not voting to add it. We've added it to the agenda as an agenda item. And the question is, do you approve the agenda with that change?
Right. And the question of order, and perhaps this is to Mr. Beatty, is I believe that when you add an agenda item to an agenda that's already been published, that the council isn't allowed to take action on that item at that meeting because it wasn't published. So if that's the case, I'm fine with adding it as long as we're not taking action on it.
Madam Mayor? What she's, I believe she's asking is that by adding 6C, the maintenance projects, the 2020 maintenance projects, the only thing you're not going to do is take action on it, make a motion on it?
I understand that. But I'm going to refer to Mr. Beatty. Mr. Beatty, can you weigh in? Are we allowed to take action on that if we add it to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, Council, yes, you are. Since this is a regular meeting, the agenda may be amended by adding items to the agenda. There is no law against taking action on that item. If this were a special meeting, you could not add items to the agenda that had not been published. But otherwise, because it's a regular meeting, add items and take whatever action you want.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Ms. Bruce?
Yes. And that's, then I'll approve it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And I'll, my vote is aye as well. So that's 5-0. So we have approved the agenda with that one change. Next, we'll move on to special presentation. Mr. Grimm, you're up with our first quarter financial update.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. So this is attached on pages three through 12 of the packet, regular first quarter update. Probably more just, I mean, basically, everything's tracking about where it would be for the first quarter here. The revenues are on the lower end and that's because we haven't gotten our tax settlement first half yet. But the building permits seem to be tracking fine for this time of year. I think I notated that in the memo. Expenditures seem to be tracking fine as well at about 23% at this time of the year. I don't know if anyone has any questions. The other item that's attached is the cash and investments report. And I did make a few notes at the end of the report, just on a couple of different balances, like on the water fund and all things as far as with our bond proceeds coming in, our equipment certificates fund. So I don't know if anyone has any questions. I don't know if I have any real super highlights to point out, but I'll maybe just open it up for questions if anyone has any on the revenue or expenditure or cash and investment report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grimm. I'll go down the line. Pam, did you, council member Mortenson, did you have any questions?
Um, I don't know if it'd be beneficial to anybody else, but I would kind of like to see a column for, that says 2019 or the year before, in comparison to where we're at right now, year-to-date. Would that help anybody else? I'd just like to see the comparisons from last year, just even the percent year-to-date budget.
Okay. Mr. Grimm, can you, is that something that's easily done?
I can look into that with the software company. I think it would be a matter of adding that field. You're saying more the percent of year-to-date budget have a 2020 and then have a 2019 next to it. You're looking for each individual line item on those reports?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I can definitely check into that and see how that would fit and maybe try to remove a column and add a column. I just don't want it to get too busy or something, but that's, I think it'd be a possibility. I just have to check into it.
Okay. If it takes too much time, not a big deal, but I just would find that helpful. Okay?
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Maliter, any questions or comments?
No, none. Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Chumperland?
Yes. Brian, I do have one question I should ask you this morning. On the, and it's my education again with these terms. On the, I'm going to go to the last page, probably page 12. You get footnotes on the balances, the cash and investments. So on the first general, on the general fund, I'm not, wasn't sure what the term says. Most of the difference is comparison to the cash investments total has to do with the temporary CO deposits the city is holding.
Oh, yeah, I probably should have, oh. The CO stands for certificate of occupancy. So we have, you know, a decent amount of homes where we're holding. A lot of them has to do, I think we've talked about in the past, the, you know, the sod isn't in or whatever. So they basically, you know, the builder has paid either $5,000 or $10,000 and we hold that, you know, so they can get their temporary COs. And then once like the sod is in or whatever, the thing holding it up is done, then we would send that back to the builder or the homeowner, whoever's paid that. So I just wanted to note our actual, the fund balance is closer to $2 million, but the cash balance, I think, when I looked on the other sheet, was more like 2.7. So a majority of that is, it's just the assets versus liabilities or, you know, current assets versus liabilities. And a lot of it has to do with those temporary certificate of occupancy deposits. Basically cash you have. Yep.
I would have never guessed.
Okay. So, yeah. I thought about, I think, spelling that out too, and I think I was just, yeah, too shorthand sometimes. So thanks for asking.
Thank you.
All right. And council member Bruce?
Thank you. Just one comment. I noticed, you know, at the end of the first quarter, most things are tracking pretty well. But I'm noticing that dues and subscriptions under the different departments, planning, police and street department, that they're all significantly over 100%. And I was wondering if you could address that, Brian, as to the reason. If you look at page, if you look at page seven under planning, you'll see dues and subscriptions is at 167%. And scroll down to police department, that item is at 146%. And throughout, and then street department, it's at 116. And I'm just wondering why those are tracking so high when we're just in the first quarter?
I know related to the police, I think someone, it has to do with, there's the two different items there for 433 and 434.
Brian, you're fading or you're not real loud.
Okay. Sorry. It's better now. I was maybe looking away from my.
Yeah, thank you.
I sort of got my two screens set up at home here, so if I look away, I think. But for the, yeah, the police one, I think it has to do with, there's a couple of different line items relating to police training and dues and subscriptions. So I think that might just be between the two line items, the 433 and 434 on page eight there. Thinking like for, for streets and planning, you know, I think there was some different training items that we've done in those departments that we may have under budgeted for. But I can, I can look into those individual items a little more and probably get back to you. I just don't have them in front of me right now.
Okay. And at our next meeting, if you could tell us what those are for. And I apologize, I didn't ask this morning when I was on my phone call with Mr. Barone.
Sure. Yep, no problem. I will do that.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Yeah, I don't have any questions. So that was just a presentation. We don't have to do any, don't have to take any action on that. So we can move on to persons to be heard. Mr. Barone, did you receive any emails?
Mayor, Council, I did not receive any emails today for persons to be heard.
All right. So we'll move on to our consent agenda items. We have A, B, C, D, and E. Are there any that any of you wish to remove?
Yes, I would like to remove A, the work session meeting minutes from April 6th, and also E, the resolution of accepting the improvements for Enchanted Lane and Tuxedo Road.
All right. So that would be A and E, correct?
Correct.
All right. So that remains number B, approve our regular meeting minutes from April 6th, 2020. C is a resolution approving our claims. D is a resolution to accept the improvements for the Hallstead Drive reconstruction project. Is there a motion to approve B, C, and D?
Mayor, this is council member Maliter. I'd like to remove item C.
Oh, okay. So that leaves B and D. Okay.
This is Shannon, I'll make that motion.
Okay. I think.
And this is Pam and I'll second it.
Okay. Ms. Bruce made the motion. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then Ms. Mortenson seconded that. Okay. So Ms. Mortenson, how do you vote?
I vote aye. Okay. And Mr. Maliter?
Aye.
Mr. Chumperland?
Aye.
Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
Ms. Bruce? Okay. And I vote aye. So that would be aye, 5-0 on items B and D. So we'll take item A first. Ms. Bruce?
Thank you. On the minutes, on page 14, just before number three, it says that this was about the nuisance properties. And it says, direction to staff is what the paragraph starts out. And it ends with include abatement language at the end of that sentence. And it reads, direction to staff was to keep the ordinance as it is and possibly update outdated portions of the current ordinance and include abatement language. And my understanding is we already have abatement language. And I don't remember needing to change the abatement language. And I'm just curious, and maybe this was just an error in what was said. But I'm just wondering, what including, what does including abatement language mean? Who said that? And what did they say? I don't remember that part of the conversation.
Madam Mayor, may I answer that?
Sure.
Okay. If I remember correctly, council member Maliter spoke of some abatement language. And then it was recommended, and I believe, not for positive, I can go back and listen to the tape. But I thought that Madam Mayor also talked about some abatement language.
My recollection was, and I think we'll have to go back and re-listen to it. My recollection was that council member Bruce stated she would be okay with abatement, but not with changing the ordinance or something to that nature. And I think council member Bruce is correct. I'm not sure that we need to have additional or abatement language in there since that's part of state statute. If we, if we need to abate, we can abate.
Right. And there already is abatement language in the current ordinance.
Right.
Right.
So I think what the general consensus of the council was to change, to kind of update the ordinance and add, you know, possibly update the outdated portions we also talked about. And I know there was some difference in, in terms of allowing or not allowing certain vehicles or types of vehicles and how many. And so we thought, if we brought it back, we could take a look at that and then discuss the particulars of that when it's brought back. That was my recollection.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. I don't recollect. I understand, I remember people talking about that, but I don't remember that being as a direction to staff because I thought we couldn't put a limit on how many, you know, like what types of vehicles you can and cannot have in your yard. I thought there was discussion on that. And that was discussed so that that would not be included in the current ordinance. And that the ordinance should just stay, and possibly just updating the outdated portions of the current ordinance. I can just remove the portion that says, and include it, and include abatement language. I can just take that completely off and leave, leave the sentence to just read, direction to staff was to keep the, to keep the ordinance as it is and possibly update outdated portions of the current ordinance.
Okay. So here's the thing. Hold on. Well, I do recall we said to staff, well, and I think the questions were posed to Mr. Biggerstaff or Mr. Beatty, I'm sorry, regarding language, whether or not we can limit the number. I think you should just go back and listen to it again, that section of it. And then bring it back at our next council meeting. I think we.
And we can do that.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks. All right. So Mr. Maliter, you had pulled number C?
Yes. If we can go to page 21 of the packet, the item for Action Fleet. I want to follow up on a conversation this morning with Mr. Barone. Can you elaborate on what that forfeited property is?
Mr. Barone?
Do you want me to take that?
I'm gonna. Yeah, or the Paul Falls.
Or Mr. Falls. Okay.
What? Oh, go ahead, Paul.
Madam Mayor, Council, what page is that on?
Page 21.
Okay. Let me take a look here quick.
And I can start as far as, I think it's a matter of the.
Oh, sure.
The motor, these, basically the two different line items for each of the outfitting squads, 78 and 79. So I think, you know, so a portion of it's coming from our budgeted capital improvement plan fund. And then there's a portion for our, and Chief Falls can talk more about the forfeited property, but it's a, basically some of the dollars are coming from that balance where when we have any type of property that's forfeited and we sell or whatever to cover, to basically make sure we stayed within our budget for that items, those items.
That is correct. So these are our two newest squads. So I'm, what is your question specifically?
So I was wondering why it was forfeited property. But I think the answer to this is on the very front of the line, instead of an E, there's a G. I assume E means expense and G might mean some kind of a credit. Is that correct, Brian?
Yeah, E is expense, G is a general ledger item. So it's basically, that item would be like a liability ultimately because we, it's a deposit amount that sits there. We have forfeited property that comes in and we're able to use it for eligible expenses. So the balance is at, you know, X amount of dollars. And when we, and when Chief Falls, you know, they have some discretion on to what to use that for ineligible expenses. So it just basically comes out of that G line item or G code versus an expense code, a balance sheet type item.
Okay. So I think the true, the true expense to Action Fleet is $24,668. But what we're seeing is that about $10,000 of that comes from forfeited property.
Correct. Yep.
Yes. And I think, just a little clarification on that. What happened in this particular case is these two squads are the newest version of the police interceptors. And the pricing did not come out or was not released. This is an entirely new vehicle until well after that budget process was closed. And so we had to kind of guess. Unfortunately, the cost of the car itself went up considerably before, or I should say after we had budgeted. So the overage, if you will, came out of forfeiture. So hopefully in the future, we'll be able to budget much closer.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions regarding claims? Otherwise, Mr. Maliter?
I'll make a motion to approve the claims as submitted.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that. This is Pam.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Bruce, I think Pam got the second in first. So Mr. Maliter made the motion and Ms. Mortenson seconded that. So Ms. Bruce, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Chumperland?
Aye.
Mr. Maliter?
Aye.
Ms. Mortenson?
Aye.
I vote as well, Lisa Whelan, Mayor. So with that, motion passes to approve claims, 5-0. And next, we'll move on to number E. And that's accept the improvements and authorize the final payment for Enchanted Lane and Tuxedo Road project. Ms. Bruce, you had some questions on that?
Thank you. And these are probably for Ms. Fousky. And I talked to Mr. Barone about this this morning. I just wanted some clarification or to help me reconcile the difference between the different amounts. So we're seeing on page 31, where it says the lowest bid was submitted by Valley Paving for $693K. And then it looks like the final construction cost based on the work certified to date is $745K. And then there's a statement before that sentence. It says the revised contract amount associated with change orders one through three is $836K. And I'm just wanting to clarify that the lowest bid was, the project was bid at $693K and the final cost was $745K. Is that right?
Madam Mayor, if I may, yes, that is correct, council member Bruce.
Ms. Fousky, could you explain what the, what the differences were? Any idea?
Certainly. So under, on page 31, the first sentence under fiscal impact. So there were three change orders associated with this contract. One of them being the change in unit prices because of the timeframe to complete this project. And then another one was the boat launch being included in the project. Those were the two larger ones. I believe the other change order was to clarify some quantities in the, that were present in the field versus what was in the, in the plans. But essentially, change orders one through three then changed the amount of the contract that the council approved, increased it to that $836,000. And then the actual final cost of the project is $745,000. So what that's telling the council is, is that based on the contract amount and the change orders, the actual construction cost came in under what the final contract amount was.
If I can, I can jump in here for a second. This is Brian. The one piece that probably, I think everyone remembers, but maybe not, is we did get, I think it was like $92,000 or $92,500 from the Met Council related to the boat launch issue. So that was the money that came in to help offset the increased change order costs.
Yes.
Okay. That's helpful. That's, that's what I was looking for, was to explain that difference. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Yeah, it was a little confusing, but for those of us that were there when this all kind of happened, it was, yeah, the Met Council was paying for the, or a great portion of the boat launch area. So with that, any other questions? If not, Ms. Bruce, do you have a motion then to approve item number E?
I'll move, yeah, I move to approve for E.
All right. And is there a second?
John T., I'll second.
Okay. So Ms. Bruce made the motion and Mr. Chumperland seconded that. Ms. Mortenson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Maliter?
Aye.
Mr. Chumperland?
Aye.
Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
Okay. And I vote aye. So that would be 5-0. So next, we'll move on to our business items. We have no public hearing. So our 2020 street improvement project, it's first, accept the bids and award the contract. Ms. Fousky?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before you this evening is this, the item for the 2020 local street improvement project. And Adam Gadwa, Assistant City Engineer, is in attendance at the meeting here to give the council a background on the bids and the recommendation.
Hey, Mr. Gadwa.
Thank you, Allison. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep. Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. So we have a number of agenda items here associated with the 2020 street reconstruction project. A lot of them contain the same background information. So I'll just go through that once here and kind of breeze through it on the next items. But before you is an agenda item talking about accepting the bids and awarding the contract for the 2020 street improvement project, city project 01-20. This project was initiated back in September of 2019. The project was, went through the feasibility report stage, final design, and it was put out to bid. The project consisted of primarily street improvements via. The project consisted of primarily street improvements via old depth reclamation and bituminous paving. The streets include Lakeview Drive, Margaret Circle, and Shady Lane. In addition to the street improvements, while we're in there, we'd like to perform some utility improvements as well. Those consist of some minor water main repairs to mainly the valves and fittings on the water main in the neighborhood. Replacement of a sanitary sewer force main that goes from a lift station down near Lake Minnetaka and connects into the Met Council line. That force main has had, I think, over seven breaks in recent years. And so, it's imperative that that gets replaced, so that's a big component of the project. And then, we're doing some minor drainage improvements. We met with property owners and neighborhood, neighbors of the resident, residents of the neighborhood, excuse me, and they had some concerns with the drainage. So, during that feasibility stage, we added some storm sewer improvements to help deal with those drainage concerns. During design, we decided that there were a couple sanitary sewer structures that were really taking on a lot of infiltration, which is not ideal, we just want sewage going into those pipes, so it was actually taking on some stormwater. So, we added a bid alternate for structural lining of two sanitary sewer manholes, which will help with that infiltration issue on those manholes. So, we bid the project per state statute, and there were actually fifteen potential prime contractors holding the plans. And the city received seven bids. Attached in the packet here is the full, is a bid tabulation summary, as well as a full bid tab of all the individual unit prices. There's a letter of recommendation from WSB recommending award, and we'll discuss the resolution as well. So, the lowest responsive bid was received from Northdale Construction Incorporated of Albertville, Minnesota, in the grand total bid amount of seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. That amount is comprised of the base bid of six hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars thirteen cents, and the bid alternate of twenty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-five cents. The bids ranged from about seven hundred and twenty-three thousand to just over a million dollars. The engineer's opinion of grand total construction cost was six hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars. And I'll just mention this to, we looked at the bid tabulation, I'm sure some of you guys have as well, and some of the prices that we saw come in a little bit higher than anticipated were the bituminous pavement, a really large component of the project, came in a few dollars higher than we had estimated. And when you're talking about the quantity for this amount of streets, it adds up pretty quick. And then, another big expense was the sanitary bypass pumping. And that's some work to make sure that the sewer system is maintained while construction's ongoing. And it's going to be a pretty elaborate system, and there's going to have to be a lot of safety measures in place due to the proximity to the lake and so forth. So, that actually came in quite a bit more expensive than anticipated. So, that's the reason why we see a little bit of discrepancy in the estimated costs. Again, the lowest responsive bidder was Northdale Construction Co. Incorporated.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gribois.
Sure, yeah. There's a summary there for anyone who wishes to get deeper into the numbers.
Yep, all right. Council, any questions? I'll start with Mr. Trumperland, any questions or comments?
Um, I guess the only concern would be why, and I noted, and the cover letter noted as well, that it was, a lot of the cost difference was in the wear and the course, the mix, the blacktop. So, is there, is that the way, I mean, for all projects, for everybody, that the price just changes that much in between the estimate and the actual bids coming in?
Thank you, Mr. Trumperland. You know, we're seeing different pricing across the board for bituminous mix on other projects in other communities. But it is, I think, either at or a little bit more expensive than, than a lot of times we're anticipating. And, you know, with this bidding here, just, just under two weeks ago, you know, some of the news and uncertainty with jobs and whether or not construction projects would go forward and that sort of thing may have played a role, I'm not entirely sure. Like I mentioned, you know, we're talking out about a lot of units. And the unit price didn't vary drastically, but it varied enough by, you know, five to ten dollars that over this many units, it makes for a little bit of difference. But, in general, I think, I don't think prices are that much higher than here than in other communities. You know, trucking is one thing and getting into this neighborhood, which is in between the lakes. So, the trucking cost is a big component of that as well.
Okay, if I may have follow up then, looking ahead to business item six C, when we talk about our 2020 maintenance projects, we would be estimating them at a little bit higher than we probably had originally estimated, is that correct?
Yeah, I think when we get to the maintenance discussion, you know, a lot of those projects, I believe, will be quoted. And I'm not sure, we'll have to see where that discussion goes. But lots of times with that, we'll quote that work, and so, we won't go through the competitive bidding process. We'll get a few quotes and we can see what those prices come in at.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Maliter, any questions or comments?
Uh, no, thanks.
All right, and Miss Bruce?
Thank you. My question has to do with the, my question has to do with the bid alternate, the structural lining of the two sanitary sewer manholes. I noticed that when the bids came in, that some of the other bidders, other than Northdale, had bids for the alternate, the bid alternate, that one of them was like fifty percent of what Northdale bid. And I'm wondering if it's, if it's required that we award the bid alternate to Northdale Construction? If you look at page thirty-seven, Northdale bid, the alternate number one is twenty-six thousand, six twenty. And everybody else came in lower except one, and Meyer Contracting came in at thirteen thousand. And I'm wondering if it's possible to just award the base bid to Northdale and rebid the alternate, the bid alternate piece, and award that to someone that can do it for less? Or is it, is it required that the same company do both? Is my question?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Bruce. It's a great question. Did someone else want to jump in before I go forward?
No, I was just wondering, kind of the same thing, so go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, so, we noticed that discrepancy as well. And with this component of work in particular, the specifications that the contractors bid on was relatively specific, meaning the products that specifically engineering and public works Gary Peters is comfortable with, has a particular material thickness and particular specifications. That was kind of written into the specifications for the bid. With any of these structural liner products, there's multiple out there on the market. And I, that's why we're seeing the discrepancy in prices. But there are specific components of a particular product that may cause it to be more expensive or just have a different cost than other, than other products. And I'm getting to my point here, sorry I'm rambling on, but some of these, say, one of the other contractors had the lower bid, and we were talking about their bid, and they had the fourteen thousand dollar structure liner. Well, when we go and say, okay, give us your material submittal for this product so we can improve it, we might have an issue, and I don't know for certain because we don't see that in the bidding process. But we might say, well, this doesn't actually meet the specifications. And then, there might be some sort of change order discussion or an issue there. So, that, I guess, is some background. And then, to your real question, we wouldn't be able to, with what was bid here, award the bid alternate to another contractor. But what we can do is, as the motion for approving this resolution would say is, you could indicate, you know, just the base bid be awarded, and we could leave the bid alternate off the table. But maybe if Gary wants to jump in, I think that the pricing for the product that he specifically is looking for and engineering is looking for does seem reasonable at the bid alternate price given. Gary, did you want to make a couple comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Gribois. Yeah, the product that we were trying to spec out is called Spectre Shield, and it's something that we have used in three or four different manholes here now. And it's actually a spray-on liner that has performed, it's been around for about thirty years down south, and they're just bringing it up here now. It's got a ten-year warranty, it's been used in thousands and thousands of structures around the area already. The reason we like it is it's a thick product, it has a ten-year warranty on the product. It's got great durability, great life, it's a multi-layer process. So, it stops all infiltration, corrosion, you know, it protects the structures. I mean, it's like no other, I mean, when it's all said and done, it's about a one-inch-thick product that's actually sprayed on. So, I mean, it's quite the product. And the discrepancies you might see too, and I don't know if this is true, I mean, we have a contractor that is certified to use Spectre Shield. And that's what we've kind of been using as our go-to product. So, I mean, yes, there's other ones out there, are they as good? I don't know, we have not researched them enough. The city of Minneapolis does about fifty other manholes every year, and some of these manholes are a hundred years old that they've been having great success with for the last ten years. So, that's why kind of we looked at this product. So, that's why we'd like this product. Did they get a bid from the contractor that we recommended? I don't know. So, I guess that's what we're up against, to find out. It doesn't say in there who their subcontractor was for this product. But in our opinion, we love this product, it's been a great product to use. It's a little more expensive, but it's been really proven that it's weight and gold.
And I'll just add, you know, when we do this in specifications, we did not say it had to be Spectre Shield. It states, you know, or an approved equal. So, that's why, once you award the contract, you go through that submittal process where they say, here's a product. It's not, you know, this product, but it meets all these specifications, is that allowed? Or is that an approved equal? And during that construction administration process, if it does meet the specifications, then we would allow that product. Let me know if that answered your question.
So, Adam, a question, did you look at this and do you know for sure that Northdale did indeed spec the, whichever one Gary said? I mean, if we're going to pay more dollars for it, we would want to be assured that they are using that better product. Because if you have that conversation with them after we award the contract, and then they say, oh, no, we're using this other product, and then they jack up the price even more, where do we go from there then?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, that's a great question. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Peter.
If I may, yes, Madam Mayor, I did actually call R&amp;H Painting, who does this, to make sure that, you know, to ask who was asking for that product, and they were one of the contractors that asked for a bid.
Okay. Miss Bruce, did you have any? Yeah, okay. Miss Bruce?
Yes, one more question. If we were to rebid the bid alternate piece and specify the product that we wanted used, could we do that? And just to see if some of these other vendors are actually using that product and offering it at a lower cost.
Yes, thank you, that's a great question, Councilmember Bruce. Technically, no, you have to allow for an approved equal. We, you can't, I guess, require a specific product just from a competitive market-type standpoint. So, we do have, we write the specification so that we, at the end of the day, we get the final product that we'd like, but not necessarily the brand name of the, you know, the lead installer. So, rebidding it, and we could not rebid it and just say, we want this, this product. And then, I'll back up and say that Gary has, like he mentioned, used R&amp;H Painting elsewhere in the city, and actually, a while back, obtained quotes for this neighborhood, for two structures in this neighborhood. And the unit prices, if you guys are looking at the bid tab, it's a cost per linear foot of nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. And these structures are, you know, anywhere from ten to seventeen feet tall. The unit price that was received under this bid was very, very, very close to some external quotes that Gary had received right from the subcontractor. So, I think if we rebid the bid alternate number one to get the product that the city wants, we'd see very similar prices. And so, my concern with some of those lower-priced bid alternates, or bids, excuse me, is that maybe they, their, what the product they'd proposed doesn't quite meet the specifications.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Well, I, this is Pam. Can I talk or? Sure, go ahead, okay. Under the category mobilization, there was a big price difference between the engineer's estimate and the bidders. Is that the category that you were describing, Adam, that there was a big difference, it just called mobilization?
Oh, yeah, thank you, Mrs. Mortenson. That wasn't, but that's another one to mention. With mobilization, that's, you know, just paying the contractor to mobilize and get their equipment on site and get them some cash flow to start the project, not necessarily cash flow, but just to get it going. You can almost treat it as a deposit to get the project started. We always just estimate five percent because that's kind of, on average, what you're going to see. Five percent of the construction cost, we say, is mobilization. But what we've been seeing is, we use MINDOT's specifications a lot of times to write these contracts, and that specification changed, and MINDOT no longer requires contractors to cap their mobilization at five percent. So, now, they're throwing larger numbers at the mobilization because I think it helps manage their risk. Mobilization is a lump-sum unit, it's one unit, and it gets paid out with the project. You pay it based on work complete, so you don't just give them, you know, a full unit of mobilization right when they show up. MINDOT has a pay table that you go by, and depending on the amount of work complete, you pay out the mobilization. And kind of a safety net for the contractor, the owner, in this case, City of Minatrista, is you will only pay five percent, up to five percent of the construction cost in mobilization until ninety-five percent of the work is complete. So, let's see, what did, what did Northdale bid on that? Actually, Northdale was at sixteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty, which is basically five percent of their bids. They were kind of going with that traditional five percent. I will put my bid price in the units for the actual work. But some of these other contractors threw larger numbers at it. So, let me know if that answered your question.
Well, I'm looking at the sheet, and I could be wrong in this, but it is called Northwest, right? Northdale?
Northdale, yeah, so there's, there's seven contractors. So, if you scroll all the way to the top, you'll see Northdale is the low bidder.
Okay, it's called Northwest on the sheet I'm looking at, so.
I think if you scroll up, you'll see Northwest was a different bidder, and, yeah, they had a really, really high mobilization, I think, a hundred and fifteen thousand.
I see, okay, got it. Okay, that does explain it.
Okay.
Northdale and Northwest, yeah. Yeah, I thought they were saying it wrong, I'm like, man, it's Northwest. Yeah, okay.
We worked with Northwest on a couple other projects. They got the Halsted Drive Mill and Overlay, and then they did the 2019, so maybe that's what you're thinking of too.
Right, yeah. All right, so, another question, Adam, this is the mayor. Northdale Construction Company, have we or have you dealt or worked with them before? Have they worked in this area? Have we or have you dealt or worked with them before? Have they worked in this area?
Yeah, great question. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have not worked with them personally. WSB has worked with them every year, probably uh for the for as long as they've been in business. And then also back when I lived in Maple Plain, they actually reconstructed my street right in right in front of my house. So I I communicated with them regularly there, just kind of as a resident. And um I I I have worked with them before. And they get a lot of work in the in the metro, um west side, north side. Uh they don't work as much, I don't think, in in the southern communities like Lakeville and Burnsville, but you know, kind of around Albertville, west and north side.
Yeah.
And and they're around.
Of course, yeah, okay. Well, and of course, my um question is um because we've in the past have worked with the contractor that was the very low bidder by a substantial amount and ended up with a whole bunch of headaches. And I just want to make sure that we're not going down that path again.
Yeah, we'll do our best to work with the contractor. That's obviously the main component of the construction engineering services. Um we have, as we'll get to later, our inspection staff on site. Um we have our constant communication as project managers. Gary, uh Mr. Peters, al- always develops a good relationship with the contractors. Um and, you know, helps with that communication. Um so I hope that that's the case with this contractor as well.
All right, thank you. All right. Any other questions? Otherwise, um I'm looking for a motion to accept the bids and award the contract for the twenty twenty street improvement project to Northdale Construction Company of Andover, uh excuse me, of Albertville, Minnesota, in the grand total bid amount of seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. Is there a motion?
This is Pam. I'll make that motion.
Okay, um Ms. Mortensen made the motion and Mr. Malater, did you want to second that?
Sure.
All right, and Mr. Malater seconded that. So um I'll go down the road uh line again. Um Ms. Mortensen, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mr. Malater?
Aye.
Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
Ms. Bruce? Okay, um and I
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Um and I'm Lisa Wayland. I vote aye. So the vote is five oh and motion passes. So next item, we have authorized the calling for assessment hearing. Who has that? Who wants to take that?
That would be Adam as well. That would be me.
All right.
Okay, so as I mentioned, I I skimmed through the background discussion. Um but uh there is a point I want to make here, which is uh this would be a four twenty-nine uh uh project that follows state statute, chapter four twenty-nine. And because of that, um the project's proposed to be funded by the local street fund in part uh sewer sewer fund and the water fund as well as special assessments. The special assessments are for the benefiting property owners, which are adjacent to the roadwork for a portion of the street and drainage improvements. Um so in in accordance with the city's assessment policy as well as past projects, the benefiting property owners are supposed to be assessed for fifty percent of the total street and storm sewer improvement costs. And so it mentioned the improvements in the previous uh item. And they're listed there on the agenda item here. We, during the feasibility report, came up with a preliminary assessment amount. Um at the time, it included forty benefiting properties to be assessed, seven thousand, five hundred eighty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents. Um now that we have the as-bid project costs, we proceed to compute uh the actual assessable portion of the project costs. And for this project, that total is five hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred forty dollars and six cents. Um so that again is for the street improvements.
No, Adam, I'm sorry. Say that again. What number is being assessed?
So the portion of the street improvement costs, let me let me back up. The portion of the
No, I know that, but just the total. What the total assessment you you I don't didn't hear you.
I don't think I've got that yet. Can you guys not hear me very well?
Okay, all right. I can hear you now. Go ahead.
So um the amount of street and storm sewer costs for the total project is five hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and six cents. And that includes five percent construction contingency and twenty percent indirect costs. Um the assessable amount is fifty percent of that. So that's two hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, two hundred ninety-nine, one hundred and twenty dollars and three cents. So that's the total amount of assessable costs that's going to be or is proposed to be funded by special assessments. So I'll give some background. At the public hearing on January sixth, twenty twenty, some of the board members were present, um board members of the H HOA. And they um spoke at the meeting and had preferred that there are two outlots that don't have residential dwellings on them. And they prefer that those um the cost for those outlots be distributed among the HOA members as opposed to assessing those properties. And so with doing that, the residential unit assessment rate kind of changed. You took um what was forty parcels and took two away. And so you can see here that this results in two per unit assessments amounts because one property in the neighborhood is actually a Three Rivers Park District property, not a member of the HOA. Um so the proposed residential unit assessment rate for the HOA properties is seven thousand, eight hundred eighty-two dollars and twenty-two cents. And the residential unit assessment rate for non-HOA properties, which is just Three Rivers, is seven thousand, four hundred seventy. In the same manner as previous street improvement projects, the assessments would be levied for a twenty-year period um at an interest rate two percent over the average coupon rate of debt of similar term and quality. And if we need an explanation on that, we'll uh we'll bring in Brian Grimm and uh the city attorney if needed. The next step here would to be declare these costs and then order the preparation of a proposed assessments and call for a hearing on those proposed assessments. Uh the assessments would be levied in twenty twenty, certified for twenty twenty-one. There's an attached resolution calling for a hearing date to be held on May eighteenth, twenty twenty. And we would be required to publish um notice of the hearing in the official publication and send that notice to each benefiting property owner with the proposed assessment amount. At least two weeks prior to the hearing date.
Okay.
I'll open up for discussion.
Yep, okay. So um couple of questions. Um also, and I do recall them asking for those two HOA outlots or or HOA-owned properties to be then dispersed amongst the all the HOAs so that they didn't have to pay them separately. So um but here's another question, though. Um we talked about those monuments and there was some discussion about the monuments and there, I believe, on Shady Lane on the eastern, I think it's southern side anyhow. Um what has happened with those and where are we at with those?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um so there's been a resident who is the primary point of contact that I've been working with, uh Mr. Chris Dennis. Uh he's a secretary of the HOA and he spoke with uh some of you all at the at the public hearing. And he's also leading the efforts for um with city planning department about signs. And so it kind of revolves around the same discussion. And so after that public hearing, we had our structural engineer at WSB review the wall uh monument, if stonewall monument and kind of determine if it could be salvaged, um you know, with its proximity to the force main work. And it it was really determined that the one that was adjacent to the sanitary sewer, which is the eastern monument, is just too close to the pipe. Um and because it's old fieldstone with old mortar, there was just no real way to kind of salvage it neatly. So one of the discussions was, well, maybe the residents would like to, you know, save some of the rocks and incorporate it into a new sign monument. Uh we discussed that with uh Mr. Dennis and and they didn't want to be left with the, you know, pile of rocks and, you know, maybe do something with them and maybe not. And so they said, you know what, just remove the one that needs to be removed and do your best during construction to protect the westerly one. Um and so that's what the plans show.
Okay, all right. Okay, those are the questions I had. Um anybody else?
Has three, this is Pam. Has Three Rivers been notified? I'm sure they have, but um about their assessment rate?
Um they haven't been notified about their assessment rate, but we will be required to, you know, send them notice of the hearing. We've been in contact with them for a very long time. Um they did grant us utility easement. You know, their property kind of extends into the middle of the road on Shady. And uh because we're replacing the easement that kind of fell on their, or sorry, a pipe that fell on their property, we needed to obtain a a temper- or a a you permanent utility easement. So they're aware of the project. Um their properties do get assessed from time to time as they have so many around. Um so we have a contact there. They'll get notified of the assessment. And, you know, if they have questions or concerns, they they know who to reach out with uh out to at the city.
Okay, thank you. Um I have another question. This is the mayor again. So uh when we send out this these notices, I know it says a minimum of two weeks. But I was speaking with um Mr. Veroni, our administrator today and and actually before this. I really think we need to send the residents a letter informing them um as soon as possible about the assessment hearing and explaining what this is, that this is an assessment hearing and not um a public hearing regarding the project itself. Because um I want to make it clear that um what they need to do prior to the meeting, um if they want to object to the assessment. And here's the other thing, we may still be holding um telecom, um th- these type of meetings. So it's gonna be more difficult for people to um weigh in, so to speak. And so I want to make sure that they have ample, number one, ample opportunity, that they're uh well-informed, well ahead of time, and that they know what the process is and that they also know um what the meeting is about. In other words, I don't want them coming talking about the project itself. If they have questions regarding their property or the project themselves, those type of questions should be directed directly to yourself, Mr. Gabois, or to um Adam uh Allison Fowski. Those we don't need to handle at the at the um assessment hearing. However, if they have objections to the project because of the assessment or other reasons, then those are the kind of um things that we need to hear at the assessment hearing.
Yeah, that's that's a great point. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um you know, we're uh I think four weeks out from that date, so I think we can get uh this letter put together quicker than two weeks. Uh if the council would like, we could try and shoot for, you know, right away next week or potentially the end of this week. And then to your point, you know, our letter usually does explain that, but we can maybe um add to it and expand upon it to
Okay.
relay some of the same messages that you were just talking about.
Okay, and probably what we also will do, um and again, I spoke with Mr. Veroni about this uh just in case, we'll open the public hearing um and do the assessment hearing on the eighteenth. But then I'll probably carry it over until our June meeting, just to make sure that people have ample time. So um
So you'll leave the public hearing or you'll leave it open until the following?
Yes, I'll I will, but it'd be, you know, if they can weigh in sooner rather than later, that would be better. But I just want to make sure because of the situation and and the type of meeting that we're having, I'm I want to give everybody ample time and and plenty of opportunity to to express their concerns, should they have any. The other, so with that, um anybody else have questions or comments? Okay, so my computer just died. Um so with that, I'm uh I need a motion to authorize the calling for the uh as- assessment hearing for the twenty twenty uh road improvement projects to be held on May eighteenth um at seven o'clock.
John Key, so move.
This is Shannon Bruce. I'll I'll second.
Shen- okay, thank you. So Mr. Trumperland made that motion and Ms. Bruce seconded that. We'll do a roll call here. I vote aye. Ms. Mortensen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Malater?
Aye.
Mr. Trumperland?
Aye.
Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
Okay, the vote passes five oh. So I think um you have all of your, Adam, you need any more information or instructions? You're good to go?
I think we'll work with uh Mr. Veroni on getting that letter out and of course, get it in front of um him for review prior till it going out and making sure it has um ample information um that we've discussed tonight.
All right, thank you. All right. So next, we'll move on to um professional services agreement for the construction administration services. This would be for the twenty twenty projects as well. Is that Ms. Fowski or Mr. Gabois?
That'll be me again, Madam Mayor.
All right.
You guys getting tired of hearing me talk yet?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So um same background, obviously, the same project. Uh this item is discussing uh professional services proposal for administering the construction component of projects. We've talked about the project background. If you guys are aware of the type of scope of work that's occurring. I will point out that uh in comparison to twenty nineteen, this one does have some more utility work. We talked about the uh sanitary sewer force man. And I think it's been a little bit since we've done a larger scale util- utility project. And so just ahead of time, we'll be notifying neighborhood, the neighborhood residents and city staff that this is a little more invasive of a project. You've got higher more construction excavation going on, uh probably some larger equipment than we're used to seeing on these projects. Um so that's kind of one big difference um from twenty nineteen. Uh so a- as we've done in the past, we're proposing that WSB performs the construction engineering services. The the main component of that is construction observation at a long-term construction observer from WSB who inspects developments and the local street projects and the state aid projects in Minnetrista. He does a great job. He's the the guy out in the field making sure that the investment in this project is worth it, the the work is being done to the specifications and being done correctly and that residents are um getting their needs met as well. Another component would be the construction staking, so the surveying to um construct the work to within tolerance. Construction management, that would just be my role in communicating with the contractor, residents, city staff. Keeping the website updated with the weekly updates and that sort of thing. And um material sampling and testing. So um testing the aggregate materials, testing the backfill for density, making sure that um things are put back together so we don't have a lot of differential sediment and those sort of things. And of course, testing the pavement to make sure we're getting a high-quality uh pavement material. When we talk about construction observation, we're we're kind of looking at a part-time type of um observation, just to keep those indirect costs down. So we want, we we would like to have a construction observer there for eight hours per day for the first four weeks, which is when we're expecting um that utility work to take place, which is that more intrusive kind of work. And then reduce that down to about four hours a day for the remaining eight weeks. And that's assuming a twelve-week construction schedule. If the project stays, you know, contractor stays on budget on time and we don't have big rain events or other unforeseen kind of cessations in work. So as we have done in the past, there's a couple of fee spreadsheets attached. The the total uh scope of services and The total scope of services and fees are set at $81,932. Obviously, that's a not-to-exceed amount without prior council authorization. I'll note that the, there's kind of a more detailed letter included in your packet as well that breaks those fees down into the three main areas, which is that administration and observation, the surveying, and then the testing. So you can see the breakdown of those costs. The fee does result in a total indirect cost of that 20%, which was stated in the feasibility report in the beginning of the initiation of this project. So that's the, that's the memo, agenda item here, and I'll stand for any questions.
Council, any questions?
This is Shannon Bruce. I have a, I have a question. This is Shannon Bruce. Several council meetings back, we discussed, and council never came to a consensus on this, but we discussed the possibility of taking the 20% indirect costs down to 15% to more accurately budget, because we were told that that, that 20% is a not-to-exceed. And oftentimes, WSB comes in under that 20% and it was, my preference would be to lower that 20% to 15% to more accurately budget. And then I'd rather see, if, if you need to go over that, coming back to council to, with a change order or a request for that, just so we can more accurately budget for the project.
Mr. Gabois, any comments or?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Bruce. You know, there's been some conversation recently amongst city staff, and I don't think I was at that council meeting, but I know there's discussions about this indirect We've actually recently done some investigation into previous projects to look at, you know, where were these projects at? And what it ends up being is the more complicated projects require, you know, more engineering, I guess, and especially more observation in the field. And so when we have a project like last year that, you know, was a reclamation, but it actually ended up being pretty straightforward, we saw a little less time was spent. But actually, the reason that project came in under was because the estimated units for the contract had some contingency in them or didn't end up getting used. So the, the amount paid to the contractor actually ended up being a little bit less for that project. But typically, we would love to continue to do it the way we're doing it here, which is budget 20% in feasibility on full-depth reclamation projects. Then when we come and get the bids, let's say in this case, if we, if the bids came in lower, then that percentage would be less. So I think on these full-depth reclaims, we'd like to stick with 20% if possible, just to make sure that we don't underutilize or undervalue the people in the field that are watching this work get done and inspecting it and testing it and making sure that it gets done correctly. But it's one of those things that we can continue and work to, you know, improve as we go forward with projects.
I'm, I'm just aware of other cities that WSB uses 15% as opposed to 20%. And I'm, my preference is to more accurately budget and to keep that percentage lower. And not to say that you can't do what you're, what you need to do, but you might have to come back and ask for that at a later date, but that's my preference.
Okay, I thought of one more thing, too. If we did end up having to come back and say, all right, it's going to take another four weeks of inspection and that ends up being $20,000, well, a lot of, or these indirect costs are assessed, and so once we've declared the assessed costs, we won't know if it's going to take extra work until we're, you know, in the middle of August and we ran into some unexpected things out in the field. Now the city might be liable for those extra costs and won't get to share those costs from an assessment standpoint, just another thing to consider.
So Mr. Gabois, is, is, are you saying that if assessments are based on the bid as well as on your estimate of professional services, and if they come in lower, it doesn't change the assessment, but, and if they come in higher, it doesn't either? So in other words, the assessments are set one way or the other?
Yeah, that's how it's been done in this community. You know, I think that we can talk to Mr. Beatty. The assessments can be done at the beginning or the end of the project. I don't know if you want to chime in, Mr. Beatty, but in Minutrista, it's been done historically in the beginning of the project at this point in the project.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Council, this is Ron Beatty. You know, as Adam says, there is some discretion as to when you want to levy assessments. The traditional way of doing so was to build the project and incorporating or getting all the costs involved, and that would be soft cost as well as any change orders to the construction cost. And once all of those were done, when the project was finished, not assess until then, because then you would know for sure what all of those costs are. I mean, that's one way of doing that. That's, some cities don't do that, and as Adam says, that's not what we've done. And so by assessing early, you run the risk that you will either under-assess or over-assess.
Why have we done it this way? Do you know?
I don't.
I can probably drive in on that or.
Okay, Mr. Grimm, go ahead.
To me, as a, at least from my perspective, I mean, as long as, I mean, I think we've done a pretty good job of coming in at or around budgets. I mean, the residents know upfront what the, what their, as the project's being awarded and stuff, what the assessment's going to look like versus at the end, all of a sudden, instead of their $7,000 assessment, if the project runs 20% more, now it's a $9,000 assessment. I think the residents, my perspective, would like some certainty as far as what they're going to be looking at paying versus, hey, at the end, it's, you know, we want, you know, we want 25% more from them from the city. I think the way we've done it has worked fine, so.
Okay, all right.
Madam Mayor, this is Mike Brone. I have one additional comment to, to give the council to kind of chew on as you decide and contemplate what Councilmember Bruce brought up. One of the things, if you'll recall, in the last few weeks, is I've had Mr. Peters, when we've had a couple of breaks in our pipes within the city limits, send out to the city council kind of an update. And where I'm going with this is not the one, not the one we just had, but the one before that, a few weeks back. There was a break and it was near an elbow joint, so I'm not exactly sure if that was the reason that the pipe broke. But the other thing that he noted in the pictures and in an explanation he sent was that this pipe was not surrounded by sand. Somebody had thrown a bunch of rocks in there, and of course, yeah, that's going to give you a more likely chance of having the pipe break if you've got a rock by it versus sand by it. So when you heard Mr. Gabois talk about the construction observation being at 100% for the first four weeks when all the utility work is being done, that's one of the reasons why. Not to say that every vendor you hire is going to cut a few corners, but I imagine that's what happened back in the day when they constructed this particular pipe. There wasn't an observer around. Hey, let's just fill this hole up a lot quicker with some rocks and not worry about buying all the sand we need. And those are the kind of things that you can have. So when he's talking about 100% during the utility work, I think that's something to really consider. And if you back off the construction observation when they're actually doing some other phases of the work that aren't as viewable, like a pipe would be underground, then that maybe is something to consider.
All right, all right, thank you. Anybody else have questions or comments? I guess, so another maybe real quick, I just want a real quick answer. So the professional service agreement, is it a not-to-exceed? Is that what it is? Or is it an estimate? Mr. Gabois?
I apologize, Madam Mayor, I had you on mute. Sorry about that. I was almost done, I was making it quick. The construction surveying and construction materials testing are stated as a not-to-exceed. Pretty confident that we know the amount of work to do those. The observation is stated as just an hourly estimated fee. We wouldn't exceed it without prior council authorization, but sometimes the work, especially with utility work, can be extended, or you can encounter things underneath the ground eight feet down that you didn't know were there. And so that's how it's phrased.
So then another question with the professional services, since some of the funds are coming out of our sewer fund, some are coming out of our water fund, some out of our storm water fund, are, is any, how much, or have you allocated? Or maybe this is a real quick question for Brian, have you allocated certain amounts of the professional service agreement towards those funds versus the street project itself?
Mr. Grimm, I don't know if you'd like to chip in there, but the overall cost or proposed fee of the professional services agreement is, would be, would, in addition to the feasibility report fee, topo fee, design fee, would amount to 20% of the overall project costs?
Yeah, and.
Okay, so each, yeah.
Each fund would pay a whole.
Portion. Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Council, what is your pleasure? I'm sorry, what?
I make a motion to move forward on this. Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, it's just approving professional service agreement for the 2020 Street Improvement Project.
I make a motion?
Okay, is there, yep, thank you, Pam. Is there a second?
This is Mike, I'll second that.
All right, so a motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Mr. Maliter. So Ms. Bruce, how do you vote?
I'm voting no. And the reason I'm voting no is because I'm aware of other cities that pay less in indirect costs than 20%, and that's the reason I'm voting no.
All right, and Mr. Trumperlin?
Aye.
And Mr. Maliter?
Aye.
And Ms. Mortensen?
Aye.
And I'm voting aye, so motion passes 4-1 with Bruce dissenting. So next we'll move on to our Street Improvement Project discussion for 2021. So if you recall, and I'm going to hand this over to Ms. Fowski real soon, but as you recall, we did give staff direction that we're wanting to do the hardscrabble road for 2021, and especially in light of the sewer breakage, we'll, you know, have to be looking at that as well with that project. But the other questions that arose were, were we going to do Loring Drive with hardscrabble? Were we going to do Stone Bridge with hardscrabble? Were we going to do all three? Were we just, you know, so there were a number of different combinations that we said, well, we'd like to bring that back and just see what the combinations look like. So with that, Ms. Fowski, can I hand it over to you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So based on the discussion, last discussion with council on this, again, it was clear that hardscrabble was a project that the council would be willing to look at for 2021, and specifically looking at Stone Bridge, the challenge of that area with the larger lots through there, and wanting to keep assessments at a palatable rate, that based on what we were estimating for overall project costs, what estimated assessments would look like in a few different scenarios. And so on page 69 of your packet is a summary of the storm and street costs, which is historically what has been assessed to residents, and showing a few different options. One, if each street was assessed according to the budget amounts that we've presented to the council previously. And then the bottom three numbers are taking a look at a few different scenarios. One is if, if they were all lumped into one project. And then the other one was looking at pairing Stone Bridge with either Loring or hardscrabble. So the reason we just, again, wanted to bring this back to the council, have some high-level numbers for estimates, estimated assessments, and see what direction the council would like to look at going through there. Another item that I lumped into this memo because it did belong here, but to follow up with what Councilmember Bruce had brought up with the previous item, is looking at what historical indirect costs have been for projects. And we're looking at, with this being a reclamation project, you know, that we've seen with other street projects in the city between 10% and 20%. 10% is for a very straightforward project, not any utility work, that sort of thing. As Mr. Gabois had explained, when we start getting into utility work, we start looking at higher indirect costs. And certainly for a budget purpose, we've placed 20% in here for indirect costs since these are reclamation costs.
So I have a couple questions. I'll just start here real quick. Is there any cost savings? Would there be any cost savings to the city doing all three of these roads at once versus doing maybe hardscrabble in '21 and then coming back and doing Loring and Stone Bridge at a later date? Is it less expensive, if you will? You know, what, where are we at with that?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. So when you look at this area, since there are three streets in one vicinity, you'd certainly look at some savings from a mobilization perspective, as we had a great conversation on this earlier this evening. Mobilization being, you know, the cost that the contractor incurs to bring equipment and materials out to the project site. So certainly if you looked at one larger project, you would have, you know, decreased mobilization costs. The other thing, too, is when you look at a larger-scale project, it's less disruption, even though they're separated, it's still less construction traffic on County Road 44 if you do lump them all into one project as well. So there is a, you know, a benefit to that, whether it's a financial benefit or not, I think would be up for discussion, but that's certainly something we'd want to take a look at as well. And then the other component, too, is when we look at these types of projects, you know, if you're looking at, for example, the estimated cost of Loring or Stone Bridge on its own, those are, those are fairly small projects for a contractor. So they can be nice, what we would call filler work, if they're in the area and they had a large window of opportunity to get the work done. It might be an attractive project, but when you lump them together and get a larger project, contractors are able to allocate resources, knowing that they've got a larger project. So I would, I would think that we might get a little bit better pricing if we have a larger project through there.
Okay, all right. Anybody else have some? Mr. Maliter, you want, do you have questions or comments?
I think, you know, in looking at this, in looking at the price tag here, we probably need to roll this into the discussion on what we're doing with maintenance for 2020, since we have about $338,000 in the road fund as of right now. See if we can take that in combination with our levy next year and do the whole thing. That would of course mean we would. That would of course mean we would minimize maintenance efforts this year. Uh, but I think we have to look at 2020 maintenance and 2021 projects together, kind of decide, um, where we want to put our, our resources. If we want to do a little more maintenance, then we probably have to chew up a little less on this project, or, or vice versa. And, uh, it, I don't know, there's, uh, you go either way on that, but I think we have to look at it together.
Yep, so that kind of, again, it's kind of, um, chicken before the egg, uh, which one you discuss first, because you, like you said, you almost have to do both at the same time. So here's, here's the situation right now, and this is the reason why I wanted to add it, is because if we want to do any of, if we want to hit any of these roads that are, are streets that are on the list, if you recall the list, um, back from August of 2019, it had, um, all the, it had a bunch of streets listed, it had their, um, OCI rating on it, and then the treatment, and then approximate estimated costs on it. And if you look at that list, um, if we start going down the line, the problem is, um, if you go over $25,000, then you have to go out for a bid, or a, excuse me, a quote. If you go over 175,000, then you have to put it out for bid. So right at this point, um, we could almost not do anything on the list without getting some quotes. And if we're going to get some quotes, my question would be, do we want to spend maybe 100, 150,000, something in that range, to try and knock off some of these, um, roads, uh, this year yet? And then, keeping the balance of that 338 for our projects for next year? So, um, Allison, can you tell the council, talk a little bit about the bid versus, um, quotes?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. So, um, the difference in getting bids versus quotes is, um, from a timing standpoint, when you go out for competitive bids, um, you're looking at an advertising requirement. Um, and that's, you know, that typically will take you, uh, three weeks or so. Um, versus a quote, you know, you, you provide contractors with, um, a list of what your, your, you know, quote package, list of what you want to do, estimated quantities, and say, you know, submit your quote by this date. Um, the other component with quotes versus bids is with the quotes, um, you know, you, we, you have, um, you identify which contractors you provide the quote package to. Um, so, uh, for, for the benefit of the council, you still are getting pricing from multiple contractors. Um, so you'll see, you know, there's still some competition with there, but it's not an open bidding process where, um, it's advertised and available for all contractors to see and, and to be able to, um, submit a price for that.
Okay, so... Okay, anybody else want to weigh in?
Uh, John T. Based on the number in the attachment, uh, page sixty-nine, I would agree with, partially with Mr. Molliter, in that I think we should look at it as one project. Um, the assessment, projected assessment is palatable, I guess, a little bit higher than what we're seeing estimated for this year. I certainly wouldn't like to have the Loring and Stone Bridge together. That $9,000 is getting to be tough to handle. Uh, as far as saving the maintenance projects from this year and carrying them over, I would still like to see some of them done. I think we can still do some this year and still carry a balance over if we do budget the 700,000 for road projects next year, which is what our pavement plan had projected, if we go with that. And we could hang our hat on, the number on this piece of paper at 552,000, we're still carrying 150,000 over there. So, one, I'd, I'd vote for doing the entire project and still doing some maintenance this year.
Yeah, and Mr. Trumperland, just, um, FYI, I was, I was suggesting we do some maintenance this year, not, not postponing it because of some of it. We can't do everything on the list, but if we can do some, um, I think that would be, um, in, in, in the right direction. So, um, Ms., um... Hello?
Oh, who are you? Were you asking, I didn't hear you.
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
Um, I agree with what John just said, and Mike too. Um, I, of, of the assessed value or, uh, total at the very end there for the one project looks, uh, more reasonable, and I would like to do some maintenance again this year. But I think we need to see that, uh, sheet, again, in front of us so we can look at the numbers and see how much we can do with the money that we have.
Okay, that's a good point.
I, I would like to add one point of clarification, this is Councilmember Molliter. Um, John referenced the 552,000, um, that's not the actual cost, it's 1.1 million. That's what we'd have to fund next year. Now, we assess half that, but we have to actually, from a cash perspective, have 1.1. So, to do the whole project, you know, it's going to take all 700,000 plus the reserves, uh, or, or the fund balance to get that done. Just so people understand that. Unless we do an inter-fund loan from one of the other funds and pay that back, which, we can talk about doing that too. Um, or, or bond, we really can't bond for half a million dollars. But, just from a cash flow perspective, that's, that's the nut that we need to crack. So, I just want to clarify that. If, if we do the one project next year, uh, it doesn't look like we could do a whole lot of maintenance this year.
Well, so, and maybe Brian can, um, chime in here. We have, uh, 338,000, um, is the current balance in the road, so roughly. We are levying 600,000 for 2020, for the projects that we're doing, giving us a balance of 938,000. We're using for the road projects, for the 2020 road projects, 486,000. That would leave us a balance of 452,000 roughly. So if we were to, um, use, so for, for, um, let's say, 452 plus the 700 would be, um, you know, a little over 1,100, so that would be everything. So then we couldn't do any maintenance projects. So unless you said, like Mr. Molliter said, we could borrow some from a, another fund.
Yeah, no, I think, I think those numbers are correct.
This is Shannon.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Sure, go ahead. Shannon, go ahead.
Thank you, um, I, I just wanted, thank you. I just wanted to, um, point out, if, if I were a resident that lived on hardscrabble and I'm looking at, if we just do hardscrabble, my assessment's going to be $6,871. I'm not going to be real happy with adding Loring and Stone Bridge and having to pay quite a bit more, um, to take on those costs myself. So I think we have to consider that, um, because, I mean, they, they can see this, what we're talking about tonight. Um, I guess my preference is, is to do just hardscrabble and, and do as much maintenance as we can with the other money that we have. That's my preference.
Yeah, and my, I had made that, yeah, I had made that point, that exact point when we were talking about, um, um, Duchene Lane and Oxyolk. That Oxyolk in and of itself would have been a lot lower, just in and of itself, but when you added in Duchene and you added them together as a, as a project, one project, it raised the, um, assessments for, for Oxyolk. So it's, it's the exact same thing here. So, I mean, that's something we have to consider. On the other hand, I think there's two other things to consider. One, I don't know that we could do Stone Bridge in and of itself. And the reason being is that, you know, a $9,600 assessment might be more than what the, how do you say, the threshold might be. And the other thing is, um, if the city can save some dollars, because regardless of the assessments, the city still has 50% of the costs that we have to bear. And if we can save some money doing them together, then I think that's a better use of our tax dollars, um, that we are going to be spending. So, those are just some things to think about. Anybody else want to weigh in?
Well, I guess I'll, um, follow up on, uh, this is Brian. Um, yeah, I mean, basically, I think it comes down, I think, uh, Councilmember Molliter said it pretty well. If you want to probably, uh, do one project, you probably don't want to do a whole lot of maintenance. And I, Madam Mayor, you were starting to do the math, but you're pretty much, um-
Um, I, Brian, I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry, okay. I'll get closer here. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, I was a little further away. Um, but yeah, I guess, yeah, those are probably a couple of different choices that have been, you know, stated as far as whether, um, do less maintenance and do one project for all three of the roads in 2021, or, or potentially do like just hardscrabble, but then do a whole lot of maintenance projects, I guess is a, a couple different taxes, depending on where the council wants to go, so.
Right, and then the question is eventually, um, sooner than later, we have to do Loring, um, as well. I mean, we have to do them sooner than later. I guess the preference would be as if we could do all three together and then still find a little bit of maintenance money to work on some of the, um, maintenance items, um, in 2020. The thing, the other thing we have to consider and we have to look at, and I talked to Allison a little bit about this. You know, we can't let some of these maintenance projects go too long. Otherwise, they're no longer going to be maintenance projects, they're going to be reconstruction or reclamation projects, and then it's going to cost the city a whole lot more. So that's the other thing to, to think about. You know, is it better to do just hardscrabble and then do a whole bunch of maintenance? I guess that's the other question. Anybody want to weigh in?
Uh, John T. Go ahead, Mike.
I, I mean, obviously there's no, I mean, all, all the points are valid here. I mean, um, there's really no great solution. I think, you know, to, to Ms. Bruce's point about hardscrabble, I, I agree. Um, but then you end up with Stone Bridge where, um, that assessment amount, you know, if it gets challenged, that might not actually work. So then we'd have to up the city's portion, and if everyone pays more, um, so there's really not a good solution there either. But I think if we did them all, if we did the one project, I, I really don't see how we would find any money for maintenance. And I, I know, you know, if, we want to do both. Um, it's just, this is the hard reality right now. Uh, outside of going out with some type of bonding or borrowing from another fund or a letter of, a line of credit facility that we could draw on, which we don't have. Ideally, that's what I'd like to see, is if we had a line of credit that we would draw on next year for the assessed portion of this, and maybe draw on that again in the following year, and then take those and bundle them together for a bond offering after that, uh, I think would be a much smarter way to do this. But, given the timeframe we've got here, uh, especially for this year's maintenance, um, we're probably not going to be able to do that. But, long term, I think that would be the smarter way to tackle some of these projects.
Shannon, Bruce here. Um, I, I think the mayor made a good point about, um, the maintenance and doing maintenance projects now versus later when they become reclamation projects. These projects that we're looking at here, um, Loring and Stone Bridge are already reclamation projects. So, I'm, I don't, I, I guess I'd rather take, I, I'd rather do hardscrabble and take the money and, and do the maintenance and prevent those from becoming reclamation projects sooner. Um, then, because these, these are already reclamation projects that we're looking at here for, um, for Loring and Stone Bridge.
Right. Well, let me ask the council something. Um, if we do hardscrabble in 21, um, can we come, I, I know it's a future council, but is there any way, um, of committing Loring and Stone Bridge, maybe with another smaller project in the area, I don't know, uh, for 22? Um, and then doing a lot of the maintenance in 20, not, not only in 21, but we could start doing some of that maintenance now, and then we could do, um, the rest of it in, in maybe 21?
John T., I would agree with that. My only concern is looking at the assessment that would, if we just did Loring and Stone Bridge by themselves, is, we probably would have to discuss our assessment policy and whether we stated 50% on that. But, I agree, I, I do, I would like to do some maintenance projects as well and, and, uh, acknowledge Mr. Molliter's statement on what our total spend is versus, I, I mean, out of pocket. So, um, yeah, hardscrabble, yeah, needs to be done. I drove all three of them again on this weekend, and certainly hardscrabble's been bad for a long time. Loring and Stone Bridge aren't pretty, but aren't necessarily as bad as hardscrabble, so.
Yeah, this is Brian, or, or, I'm just going to add maybe one comment, I guess. The, uh, I mean, the assessment on, uh, Duchene and Oxyolk this year, I think, was almost 8,600. So, to me, I mean, if I'm reading this right, Loring, Stone Bridge is a... Out of the, the ballpark, it would be something that would be, um, that we wouldn't be able to prove benefit on to that, to those areas, so.
Yeah, it's just, again, 88 is still, it's a lot. And then if you go up to the 9, 9,000, and that's in today's dollars, who knows what it would be? Um, but, having said that, um, here's the other thing to consider. We don't know yet, um, how many prepayments are going to be made. And if, so, I guess, a couple of thoughts. In order to move this thing forward, in order to make a decision here, um, it sounds like we want to do some, um, some maintenance projects from that list. So let me ask the council something. Because we don't want to have to go out for bids, we'd rather, in order to get anything done this year, we're going to have to go out for quotes. Having said that, we're going to be limited to no more than 175,000. So if we were to cap it at, let's say, 150,000, okay? That, and then, when those quotes come in, then we can see where we're at, and we may know a little bit better by this fall, uh, financially, what we want to do. And I guess the question to Ms. Falsky is, when do we need to make a decision in terms of authorizing plans and specifications for the 21 projects?
Um, Madam Mayor, I would recommend that we, uh, start looking at authorization late, late summer, early fall, in order to meet the early bidding that the council desires.
All right, so, end of August, beginning of September kind of time range?
Yes.
So we could have some, some time to discuss maybe what Mr. Molliter had said, is either look into a line of credit, or maybe, um, borrow a small amount from another fund, um, Tree Preservation or the Environmental Fund possibly, I mean, one of those funds. Then we might be able to do everything that we really want to do. Does that, does that, council, does that make sense?
What about then, is that implicitly then allocating money for this year's maintenance project then, that we'd start working on right now?
Yeah, it would only be, my, what I'm suggesting is that we do like 150,000 for maintenance projects because we can't really go over 175, because then we're into a bidding. Okay, so I'm saying, let's do 150, 175 this year, go out and get those done. Let's see where we're at from a, um, dollar amount, financial point, by the, let's say, by August, and then we can decide if we want to add Stone Bridge and Loring into the mix for 21. Does that make sense?
I, I could be comfortable with that. Um, one thing I will say to your previous statement about if we only do hardscrabble, would we commit to Loring and Stone Bridge in subsequent years? Uh, my personal answer to that is no. Uh, the reason for that is, we have spent a lot of money in this very small part of town now in the last couple of years, uh, with what we're doing this year and next year. Uh, the rest of the city needs attention- uh with what we're doing this year and next year. Uh, the rest of the city needs attention, too. We've talked about Jennings Cove. We've talked about um uh Eastview, um, Morningside. You know, eventually I'd like to get Minneapolis Avenue on that list because it's turning into a gravel road. Um, so we, I, at some point, we kind of have to stop the bleeding down here and and look at the rest of the city, too. So uh, either we make the commitment and and get it done, or or kind of have to move to the bottom of the list, or at least not always on the top.
Okay, yeah, point well made, yep. Um, all right, anybody else? So let me ask the council, I can't see your heads nods of approval. So are you okay with, we're still on on target with hard scrabble for twenty one? And for this year, for twenty twenty, we're going to knock off some of the ones on the um uh list and we'll let staff decide which ones we can do in that hundred and fifty, hundred and seventy five thousand dollar range. Are you okay with that? Will they bring that back at the next meeting then, their suggestion? Question for Allison and Gary.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I think uh Gary has a, he has a good list of uh streets that he wanted to take a look at. And I think that's something that we could bring back to the council at the next meeting.
Okay, so the next meeting would be May fourth. Would will we have enough time then? Let's just say we get all our ducks in a row, you come back with the ones that you're going to recommend, you're estimating they're one seventy five or less. Um, will you have enough, will you get quotes on those before that meeting? I'm just, timing wise, I'm I'm getting a little nervous.
Sure, Madam Mayor, as a as a matter of clarification, I I I would, we would ask the council to authorize us to solicit quotes for that work. Um, just given the dollar.
Okay, and then, yeah, John?
John, you'd added, you'd added our twenty twenty maintenance as six C coming up next, so probably we agree on hard scrabble, whatever, and then we can kind of discuss the maintenance projects that were listed on uh February meeting, I've still got a printout in front of me, as to how the staff rated them or listed them at the time.
Okay, so a a good point. So uh, I think we're all on board for hard scrabble. Loring and Stonebridge are still up in the air, so now we'll move on to the maintenance. So Mr. Trumperland, um, you had some questions on the maintenance then. So first of all, Wildwood Avenue is the first one on there. That was already completed, correct, Gary?
Yes, Wildwood is completed.
All right, so Mr. um.
Madam Mayor, we don't, I don't think all the council members have that in front of us.
Okay, probably not, and I apologize. Um, we're not going to make a decision on that, on that today. Um, the the um staff will bring that back, but since Mr. Trumperland had some questions regarding that, I think it's appropriate to let him ask those questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's it's not so much the questions, uh, at the, the handout that we got in February broke them into two different tables with table one listing uh six, which the one you noted, Wildwood, was already done. The next five in sequence were County Road one ten extension was a one inch overlay for thirty four. Kentucky Memorial, or Kentucky, Kennedy Memorial was uh one inch overlay for thirty two thousand. Highland Road, the paved return, one inch overlay for thirteen thousand. And then Scott Drive was an edge mill for seventy thousand and Susan, which they're connected to each other, was an edge mill for twenty. Those add up to under the numbers that we've kind of been talking. So they tend to to fit if those all per Gary were on the list.
Right, if I may clarify, you can, you can take Highland Road off that list. It was the paved return. It's been destroyed. I mean, it's too late. It's uh, you might as well take it off that list. An overlay will not help that at this point.
Okay.
Okay. There was some discussion of, I think it was either Susan or Scott, where it, there was some big rise in the asphalt that needed to be looked at before that amount was actually confirmed.
John T, that was my concern at the time, being I live on and basically and driving in and out to Scott has uh this year was like a roller coaster. It has been in the past, but this year it was more pronounced. But if you were here now and looked at it, you wouldn't know it existed. But that was my question to Gary and to Ms. Falsky was was that cracking and that that substructure, if that's, I mean, if we do the one inch overlay and then it's still going to heave and crack across, is that wasted dollars?
Madam Mayor.
To be honest, it can, it could be, yes. I mean, that's what I feel.
Madam Mayor, um, so when you look at adding uh bituminous to to a road, it's it's there to provide some structural strength, but based on um what's uh, what I saw out there, Mr. Trumperland had brought that to my attention. And based on what he's telling me now, there's, there's something going on with the uh material that lies underneath the pavement that um I would be, I I would be concerned with spending money on putting an overlay on that road, knowing that there's likely some issues with some of that subgrade in there and the wa- and the water content through there.
Okay, so would um, so at our May fourth meeting, would you and Gary be able to bring back um some information and numbers, updated information, ISO ratings, whatever you need to do so that we can make an informed decision that evening on what what um maintenance roads, we should, what maintenance projects we should be doing for twenty twenty?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that would be the, that would be the intent.
Okay, um, because as Ms. Bruce pointed out, not all of us have have the list and especially not the updated list in front of us. So it would be good to have that and then also your rationale and what you found in between time and also why you're going to be recommending the ones that you're recommending. And I'd also like to find out uh with these, these maintenance issues and the one inch or whatever it is, the edge mill and all that, how much will that add? Uh, uh, again, I know it's an estimate, but how much will that add to the life, to the length of the life of the road? In other words, will it, will it be ten years? Will it be five years? Is it fifteen years? What can we expect to see how much longer these roads will last?
We we can probably estimate at it, yes. I mean, whether it's super accurate, I do not know, but yeah, I believe we can kind of put some, put some rough numbers together.
Okay, all right, okay, anybody else? Yep.
Just may ask one question. Would you like us to look at Loring, since we are thinking about not doing that for a few years? Would you like to see numbers just on Loring for an inch and a half overlay on that road, just to get us by for five, six years to? I mean, it might help, might not. Um, you know, like we're doing with the rest of the roads. Is that an option that we should maybe look at for that road itself, just to get it quote unquote, by for a few years, uh, you know, to ki- kind of maybe kick that can down the road and uh, you know, a little farther? Is that, is that an option that you would like to see or not waste our time with it?
Um, I'd be open to looking at at an option like that. I mean, we.
I'll just let you know I'm not, so don't tell them much.
Well, I just think we could, we could put a small overlay on that, Mr. Malter, and then we could look at other roads farther out. And then this would be good for, you know, maybe five, ten years. You know, it'd be a way to prolong that road's life, so we won't have to go back to it. Now we can move on to, you know, other areas of town. I I'm just throwing it out there as a, as a suggestion.
I just, I think you could take that same logic and apply it to a lot of other roads in the city. Um, I, if we're still going to viably consider the whole one project for next year, by doing, you know, by one project, I mean, Loring, Stonebridge and hard scrabble, um, then we really shouldn't waste our time looking at an overlay this year.
Nope, understandable.
That's, that's my thought. I don't know, rest of the council can chime in as you feel appropriate.
Anybody else have thoughts?
This is Shannon. Uh, I'm, my concern is Loring, when I drove it, it appeared to be in a in pretty bad shape. And I'm, I questioned the wisdom of putting an overlay on it.
Yeah, I, I think um Mr. Maliter's point and your point are well taken, um, good points. So let's um, let's not add it in um then um for this year, uh, for the maintenance. We'll see how things shake out later on in the summer and and uh then we'll discuss whether or not we want to add Loring and Stonebridge into the mix for the reclamation for twenty one. Does that sound fair, everyone? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, staff, do you have enough direction on this?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you.
All right, okay. Um, with that, then, we'll see, we'll see this back on the, on the fourth of May. And with that, we'll move on to um staff reports. We'll start with Mr. Baroni.
Yes, Madam Mayor. So I have kind of one large item and it's probably going to incorporate the other two that are listed under staff reports. And what I thought I would, and what I thought I would do tonight is, as you know, we've been all dealing with the pandemic and it's kind of forced us to work differently. And some of the times we're doing the jobs we normally would do, but the other times we're not. And so I wanted to kind of have each of our department directors kind of chime in and talk about some things that have changed. It may not be apparent to the council, but it it's kind of just in the, you should probably know that it's changed. So um, first, I think I'll have uh David talk a little bit about kind of where we are with um building permits and and what's been going on in that area.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mike and council. Um, I mean, the the wheel continues to turn, obviously, with uh inspections and permits. The the biggest uh change with that would be just the um dr- dropping off of permits and getting them picked up. Um, a lot of, a lot of that's being done via mail or or just leaving them in the the vestibule area, if you will, at City Hall for people uh to pick up. Um, so that maybe takes a little bit longer than what it usually would if we were under normal circumstances. But um we certainly still have activity, as Brian pointed out earlier with the financial update. We're still, we're tracking very well right now. I think we've done thirty five new home permits so far this year. Um, with inspections, that's changed a little bit, too, in the, in the sense that people now call Gary, uh, our building inspector directly to uh schedule an inspection, whereas they used to call City Hall. Um, so that, of course, takes a little bit more time out of his day feeling those calls and then uh adjusting his schedule. But um for the time being, that that was the best solution um in order to, for him to know where he needed to be from a scheduling standpoint. So um, things are still turning. We're still doing inspections. Um, and and activity continues on in in that sense. And and Nick and I are 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 both working from home and still certainly getting inquiries from uh developers, residents and such via email and telephone. So um things may take a little longer with permits, but uh they they still are out there actively um inspecting and and uh we're doing plan reviews. So that that continues.
Thank you.
And uh, and then the um next person I'll have talk is Brian. Now, these are um some items he's been dealing with. They're not maybe necessarily his area um direct work, but both the, as the council knows, we had some um requests from Hennepin County about abating the penalties for late payments on property taxes, and we have a new open book format. So if, Brian, you want to just kind of touch on those real quick, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, um, uh, thanks, Mike and Madam Mayor and council. So uh, yeah, the, I think I had sent out an email. Was it late last week that the Hennepin County was uh really going through its committee process? Like they had a committee meeting last week on uh moving the uh, the deadline for the May fifteenth property taxes to July fifteenth. And I think that was going to their full board tomorrow or at this week's meeting. So I assume they'll put something out um to all the cities and stuff and to get it on their website and social media and whatever, as far as if that change did go through. Um, so that is still um, you know, in the works and um we'll obviously uh update you if that does happen. And then obviously, we're adjusting at the city as far as making sure we have proper cash flow liquidity, et cetera, to do um, you know, if they do that delayed, delayed payments there to us. Um, and then I guess, secondly, the open book process that would have been on Wednesday this week at City Hall from five to seven, but that obviously has been canceled and it's all remotely. So if anyone has any um questions and and even to the open book process, they should always be um talking to uh our county assessor, Kevin Wynn, right off the bat. And um basically, I think they're supposed to work with him. And if they still, even after working with him, have a uh an appeal, they have to do that by May twentieth. So that, but, so if we get any questions from people, we're still obviously forwarding on to the county assessor's office, just like we would. Usually, it's just there's no onsite meeting this year because of the current conditions.
Okay. Uh, thanks, Brian. And then the next person I'm going to have talk is uh Chief Falls, and he's going to talk about what they're seeing for their calls of service. There's been kind of a adjustment seen in the mix of calls and then also a couple of things related to the medical examiner's office and the crime lab. So Paul?
Uh, thanks, Mike, uh, Madam Mayor, council. Uh, you know, as you can imagine, our our uh job is relatively this much the same, but uh but different as well. We're still seeing calls, uh, but it seems that they've changed. We're seeing obviously a lot less traffic and traffic-related uh issues, which is probably a good thing. Um, on the other hand, we're seeing more domestics, uh, more medical calls. Uh, unfortunately, uh, you know, the, I think the stress of all this is is hard on people as well. So that's certainly not helping people that already have underlying medical conditions. Uh, so we're tending to see that. And obviously, our response to those calls uh has evolved since this all started. Um, we had some changes, pretty significant changes right out of the gate as to how we responded to medicals. And we're continuing to uh monitor and and uh adapt those as things uh progress and we learn more about this whole thing. So um, one other area we're seeing um some issues with is it's not just our response to calls, but the medical examiner has also made some pretty uh drastic changes to their response as well. Um, and that includes, uh, they've changed a lot of the uh, the types and criteria for when they actually come out to a death scene. Uh, we did have a death, uh, I think it was last week. Uh, it was not COVID-related that we're aware of. Um, but uh they did not come out to the scene. In the past, they would have. Uh, so, uh, and Crime Lab as well uh has made uh changes and I'll be real brief here, but uh they typically come to all death scenes. Um, and uh, so what that does is it shifts some of those tasks and responsibilities that both of them used to handle onto our staff here. Uh, which is fine. It's just more work and it's a lot more time-consuming uh per call. So those are some of the things we're seeing. Um, our secretarial staff, uh, we're alternating them. So one works in the office one week and the other at home, and then they swi- switch the following week, which is working well for us. It allows us to continue operating the front desk and being as open to the public as we can be without uh exposing anyone. So that's been working well. We're encouraging residents to, anything that can be handled by email or phone, that's how we're going to handle it. Uh, there's no in-person contact unless we absolutely need to handle something that way. So uh, and obviously, the regular calls where we have no choice but to go there, we're taking precautions. So. So with that, uh, just last piece I'll touch on is uh, as you know, I'm in contact with all the Lake Area Chiefs and Hennepin County Emergency Management um on a weekly and sometimes daily basis. I'm happy to report that to date, there are not, there's no COVID-related illnesses among our Lake Area Police Officer staff or city staff that I'm aware of or that I've heard at this point. So that's a good thing, and we're hoping it stays that way.
Okay, thank you, Paul. And then the last um area, I'm going to have a couple of, well, actually, three people probably talk about um what's going on in the administration area. If I'm gonna have Ally talk a little bit about the uh temporary federal leave policies that you saw included in your packet and then the kind of some adjustments to the, where the packets are located on the website. And then I'll have Chris. are located on the website. And then I'll have Chris and both Ron talk a little bit about liquor licenses. Those, those are going to be coming up for renewal of what the state has suggested that we do and what it means. So, uh, Ally, if you want to talk about the couple of items you have?
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Hi, and good evening, council members. Um, in response to COVID-19 outbreak, the federal government passed the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, um, which provides two types of paid leave protection for employees who are unable to work for various, um, COVID-19 related circumstances. In your packet, um, I hope you saw the temporary federal leave policy, um, which went to, the policy's a bit more in-depth. Um, but because this federal law was passed, the City of Minnetrista is complying with the law effective April 1st. So there is no need for council action at this time, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, um, regarding these policies. Uh, my second order of business, I was made aware and Chris was made aware this weekend that our website platform was not displaying the packet and agenda as it typically would through the council calendar webpage. Um, so I contacted the website platform company and, um, they are no longer to, able to expand when you click on the meeting date. So they have created a new page and you can see that if you hover over the government tab on your toolbar. And I've created a button where you can easily access the meeting packet and agenda. So if you have any issues, I made a graphic, um, for easy navigation. So if you have any issues, just contact me and I can shoot that over to you. But that's all I have.
Okay. And then if Chris and Ron want to talk a little bit about the liquor licensing issues?
Okay, Ron, I'll go first. And then if you want to pick up the one that you, the takeout food order one. Would that be okay?
Sure.
Okay. Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, I did some research with some other cities that, um, have liquor licenses that are coming up for renewals either in June or July. Um, I was holding off a little bit, waiting to see how this was all going to play out. But, um, I contacted the State of Minnesota and they said to go ahead and send them out as you would normally and, um, collect your fees so that when the state does open up again, that there is no problem with their liquor licenses. What some other cities have done since, of course, they, um, are not in service right now, that restaurants and such are not, they, um, will be offering pro rates to next year's, um, fees because we don't know how long, um, that restriction, restriction will be, um, enforced. So, or when it will be coming up. So it's hard to do a pro rate for them for their, this year's liquor license renewals. Um, so far I have not received any negative comments from the three that we have. And they are on the docket for May 4th council meeting for a public hearing to approve their liquor licenses. So, um, we'll see if anyone comes back and, and gives us a little kickback on that or not.
Um, Madam Mayor, Council, the ordinance or the statute that I wanted to report on was one that became effective this past Saturday. The legislature passed and the governor signed a bill which temporarily allows on-sale liquor license holders, basically restaurants, to offer a limited amount of, in effect, off-sale in conjunction with food. In other words, if you order food for pickup from a restaurant that is otherwise closed, you're allowed to buy a limited amount of beer, hard cider, hard seltzer, or wine to go in, in conjunction with that. Uh, there are a number of caveats. It has to be sold in its original containers. The folks that pick up the food order with, with the alcohol have to be verified as being 21, so on and so forth. This expires when restaurants are, uh, able to open up again. It's automatically effective unless a licensing authority takes action to rescind it. So in other words, it's in effect unless the city council does not want that to happen, in which case it's up to the council to adopt a resolution prohibiting the application of that statute in the community.
Well, Ron, my comment, um, on that one.
On that one.
We, uh, need to just, we shouldn't do anything. They should be allowed to run their businesses because we need to help them out in any way we can. So I'm.
Madam Mayor, I suspect that that will be the position of almost every city for the reasons that you stated. But I thought it was important that you be aware of the change of the law and your ability to, um, to, to block it if you wished.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have a comment on that? Yep.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. That, that's only going to really affect, uh, one of our restaurants because we only have the restaurant. And Ron, I don't believe Burl Oakes would, um, I don't think they're doing takeout foods. Right. So I don't think that's, now with the golf course opening up, that might change. Um, so I'm, I'm not sure how that'll work with, with that club license. But I know with, the only one, it would be Buddy Boy. That, um, and I know he is doing, he, he, he is doing takeout. So he may wish to, to do that. So.
Yep, yep. I know it doesn't affect many, but, um, uh, the two potential ones you mentioned, I think we should, yeah, let them do that if they wish. Um, okay.
So does anybody on the council, anybody on the city council have any questions about any of the items you just heard about? If not, that's all I have. And I think I, unless Allison has something under the city engineer thing. She was the only one I did not include in this kind of what's changed through COVID kind of briefing. So.
Hi, Madam Mayor. I don't have anything under the COVID, um, changes, but I do have, um, a few, um, items that I'd like to just quickly bring the council up to date with.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay. So one item is, uh, the council may recall that there was a property, one of the properties on Halsted, uh, where a permanent drainage and utility easement was necessary, um, on the reconstruction project, uh, for, uh, where a, a stormpipe discharged, um, at 7650. Um, the property changed hands during the project and the new property owner had been unresponsive to, um, the offer letters and, and, and requests, uh, for an update. But are now, this, this property owner is now willing to settle on the easement. Um, so the council did approve this, this easement, um, I want to say early 2018. Um, but I just wanted to let the council know that this was coming through, just so if you see something, um, you know, we have to get all the signed documentation and before a payment can be made. But if you do see something on the, uh, verified claims, uh, for Halsted, that's what that would be for. The other item that I had, um, and I had intended to have this as a, as an item on the agenda this evening was for, um, the restricting, uh, utility cut-ins into the portion of Halsted Drive, the Mill and Overlay project from this year. Uh, when I started to draft my memo early last week and in looking at the city code language to provide councils some reference background information, um, I discovered that the right-of-way ordinance actually states that, um, for, that, uh, there's a, there's a seven-year, um, timeframe after a project's complete that restricts, um, residents or contractors from cutting into a new road or sidewalk. So we're certainly covered under the right-of-way ordinance. Um, with regards to the water installation along Halsted, um, I think the, the other part of the discussion is, is we've, we've told these residents five years and the, the right of, the right-of-way ordinance says seven years. Um, there's some, some flexibility, um, within the right-of-way ordinance language, um, stating that, um, unless the, the, the director, um, who administers the right-of-way ordinance determines that there's no other location feasible, or if it's necessitated by an emergency. So there's certainly a clause that could be applied, if you will, if, if, if a resident has a failing, um, well, uh, after five years, that we could look at the flexibility within the right-of-way ordinance, um, to allow them to make that connection at this time.
Anybody have questions?
Okay.
Okay. This is Shannon Bruce. Um, I've, uh, I, I have a question. Is, is it possible, should we modify that ordinance and change it to five years instead of seven?
Um, if the council wants to, you could certainly look at that. That would certainly be an option to be in line with what you felt was appropriate for the Halsted. Um, in the, the brief discussions that we've had on staff level, um, nobody was really aware that, that there was this clause within the ordinance or where that seven-year timeframe came up with. Um, but I think, you know, similar to the conversations that this council has had, um, you know, it's, it's not appropriate to allow, um, you know, somebody to cut into a road that the city's made an investment, but what timeframe is appropriate? So if the council wants to look at that, we could certainly have that discussion.
I think the reason to possibly look at it is, the, the reason to possibly look at it is, um, a future council may not remember this. And there, it, it just, there may be a misunderstanding or some, you know, bad feelings when people come back and say, well, you said five years and now it's seven. And, um, I, I think if we want to prevent, um, misunderstandings in the future, it might be a good idea to change, change it to five. But that's, that's just my opinion.
It's, it's not a bad idea. Um, we can, I mean, obviously we're not going to do any changes tonight. Um, have to add it to a work session agenda, um, just for you, uh, future, uh, more discussion on that. So. But, uh, good points. Um, good to know too.
Yeah.
So why don't, why don't we add that? Um, Mr. Barone, put it on your, your to-do list for one of our work sessions.
Sounds good, Mayor.
This is Pam. I am curious to find out why the number seven was the number back then.
Think you might have to ask somebody who was on that council.
Yeah.
And I don't even know who was, so.
Yeah. But if there was some significant reason, who knows?
Yeah. And we can look into it too, when we have that discussion. So, yeah. Good point. Okay. Um, uh, Nisbaski, anything else?
I have one more item, Madam Mayor, if I may. Just a quick update as far, as, as well as for the Sunnyfield Road. The council may recall, there was a traffic study that was authorized. Um, the traffic counts were taken, um, before COVID-19. Uh, so we, we were able to get, capture, um, the actual, you know, what you would see on a typical school day for, uh, vehicular traffic. Um, and the traffic engineers are finalizing the report, um, so that we, in anticipation of bringing this back to council, so we can start having discussions on, um, what, what proposed improvements would be palatable in that area. Um, the challenge that we've, we were faced with at the time of the traffic study when it was initiated and, um, that we don't see, um, when we'll be able to do it now is trying to capture those pedestrian movements of the school districts indicated. Um, it would be, it's an event-based situation where it's after school hours. People are parking in one lot and crossing the road. And at this point, we don't know when such an event will take place. Um, so we'll, we'll certainly track that, um, with the school district so that we can go and get some of that information. But we'll still be proceeding with getting the traffic study wrapped up here so that council can see that and we can start taking a look at what a, a 2021 project out there would, would all entail.
All right. Thank you. Okay. And so, um, that concludes our staff reports. Are there any, um, uh, council reports?
John T., I have some updating on Pioneer Shore Creek. Um, April 9th, they had a tech meeting. Uh, object of that was for the cities to present possible projects that they might want over the, in this 10-year window that we're now working with. On the 16th, we had our regular monthly meeting and that was basically taken up by filling out some holes in our fourth gen plan and we'll bring a preliminary fourth gen plan to our May meeting. Uh, upcoming on that is there'll be another tech probably in the next couple of weeks where hopefully the group can prioritize projects. So we, so the commission has some, some view of the city's intent. And then we'll also in the next 10 days probably have our preliminary budget meeting for the 2021 budget.
Okay. Thank you, John. Anybody else?
Um, I just wanted to ask, I know Mike Kirkwood originally wanted to, uh, he's on the call. Um, if he could just give us an update, uh, regarding the Sherwood Yacht Club's, um, oh, information that's kind of being tossed around. Um, we got the emails on it.
Right. Um, so first, just kind of FYI, um, the email that we received, it sounded like this gentleman wanted the city to vote on something. And that's not our, that's not our charge. I mean, we don't have, um, we don't vote on LMCD issues. We have a representative to the LMCD and our representative looks, looks at the issues, looks at all sides, um, discusses it with the board and then our representative votes. But I don't know, is Mike, Mike, are you still on?
Poor Mike.
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know if he is.
Here. I'm here.
Okay, Mike. Did you have any comments or updates on, on this issue?
Yes. Yes, I'll, I'll be brief. And you can hear me now, right?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you all. Um, this individual, Patrick Foss, was a neighbor within 200 feet of the Sherwood Marina, which was asking for a variance, um, that all fell within normal procedures, uh, for that variance. And he was under the impression, appeared that this was going to significantly increase the number of boats in his area. There will be bigger boats because the docks are being reconfigured to allow for bigger boats. But the Marina configuration in terms of its, um, footprint, if you will, is not really changing. So he has expressed a number of issues. He has apparently emailed the city councils of all 14 cities, um, who are, um, supporting the LMCD, uh, with his concern. But, um, I haven't talked to him. I'm going to speak to him tomorrow morning. Uh, but you're right, there's, uh, nothing here that needs to be addressed by the council. And, uh, his concerns, um, about boat traffic and whatever are likely going to be better handled if he was to approach the Hennepin County Water Patrol, um, and, and get better enforcement in his area. But, uh, the, the Marina changes itself are a normal standard, uh, within LMCD rules. And, uh, the, um, and actually it's, there are some, a number of improvements that are being made in how the traffic will flow with boats around that Marina. So that's, I just wanted to have you be aware of that, that there's nothing you need to be involved with. But I'd be happy to take any other detailed questions you have.
I just, um, I spoke with, um, hold on just a second. I just want to finish here. Um, so one of the things that, um, this gentleman had pointed out, he said it was conflict of interest. Um, I did talk to Mike, mentioned it, uh, that he really needs to make sure that, um, Richie Anderson, who is the owner of the Marina, does not, who is also a board member on the LMCD, does not vote or participate in the discussions regarding, regarding this issue. So that there shouldn't be any, um, conflict of issues if he doesn't participate or vote on the issue. So that, that, those were my comments to our representative. Anybody else have comments? Or questions?
I just want to thank Mike for hanging on.
This is Councilmember Bruce.
Okay. Shannon, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Um, my only comment, my only comment is that with, with the concerns that Mr. Foss raised, he seemed, there, there appeared to be some safety concerns and some environmental concerns. And I'm not familiar enough with the project. Maybe Mr. Molliter is. Um, but because of those concerns, um, I would recommend directing, um, Mr. Kirkwood to request taking it off the consent agenda so that those, those discussions can happen because, just because of the concern of Mr. Foss. So that's my only comment is I request to take it off the, the consent agenda. So that's my only comment is I request to take it off the the consent agenda.
Um Mr. Kirkwood, um they've had these discussions, have they not?
Yes, they, the uh the the environmental action, um um I forget the term now, work up, whatever, uh is not obligated in this situation. It is the perspective of the LMCD staff that uh there is nothing in this situation that would reveal anything that would be an environmental concern uh in the actual Marina environment. What he's concerned, what Mr. Foss is concerned about is the en- environment beyond the Marina, the amount of boat traffic that's going through there. The number of boats in the Marina will not be changing. Uh they'll be bigger in some cases, but the number of boats is not to change. And he's expressed some concerns about high traffic, high-speed traffic going through his environment. All of those are issues that are not related to the approval of this change at the um Shorewood Yacht Club.
And you had a public hearing.
It would not be beneficial, and there was a public hearing, that's where he was, you know, presenting to. It it would not be beneficial to try to remove this from the consent agenda um because it's not likely that um um the my reading of the board, the LMCD board, that they would proceed with any other environmental uh challenge because there is really no environmental issue that's being created by the reconfiguration of the docks within the footprint of the Marina. Um the the issue, a larger issue of traffic on the lake and environmental impacts of more boats and bigger boats, um those are concerns I would have in the long run as well, but they're not related to this consent agenda and I think it would be inappropriate to go that way.
And this is Councilmember Molitor. Um I would like to point, well, just make a point of clarification to Ms. Bruce's point. Um Ms. Bruce, uh the LMCD works a little bit differently in how they structure actions. Um unlike the city council where we will talk about an issue and then uh make a motion at that same meeting. Generally speaking, what the LMC does is they will talk through an issue and come to some type of a conclusion. And then what they will do is they will advise their counsel, uh their attorney, to draft a motion that will be acted on in the next meeting. So that's without being involved in all the details here, I suspect that's what's happening is as Mr. Kirkwood has mentioned. They've already talked about it. They've probably come to a conclusion that, yes, this is acceptable. Now, attorney, go draft up a motion that supports what we just talked about. And then at this meeting on the twenty-second or whatever day it is, um they will actually act on what they talked about at the last meeting. So it's a little bit different than how we see consent agenda items where it's a one and done. Uh there, it's kind of a two-step process. So that might help clarify a little bit.
Got it, got it. It, yeah, it does. And and knowing that he had uh an opportunity at a public hearing, I wasn't aware of that either, so thank you.
Okay. Uh well, good, I'm glad.
Oh, this is Pam. Uh Mr. Kirkwood, I I just wanted to thank Mr. Kirkwood for uh holding on throughout this whole meeting uh to uh tell us and give us an update. And we appreciate you representing your city and keeping us updated on these issues.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank, thank you, Pam, for saying that. Um ditto. Um thank you, Mr. Kirkwood. Again, um we greatly appreciate your time and efforts. Um it is a lot of work, I know. So thank you very much. Um all right, any other questions? All right, with with that then, uh we can then be adjourned if there is a motion.
This is Pam, I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
This is Mike, I'll second that.
All right, a motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Mr. Molitor. Pam, how do you vote? Aye. M- m- Mr. Molitor?
Aye.
And John Trumperland?
Aye.
And Ms. Bruce?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so motion passes, five oh, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much uh for all of your time, everybody here. So good night and have a good one.